I will now call this regular meeting of the Corleville City Council to order on November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Could I have the roll call, please? Knudsen.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Hunn.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Goodrich.
Second.
Seconded by Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. On to item number four. I have two proclamations this evening. The first is for National Apprenticeship Week, and the second is for National Injury Prevention Day. So we will start with National Apprenticeship Week. Whereas National Apprenticeship Week is designed to highlight the dedication and investment US employers and labor management organizations have given to support registered apprenticeship. And whereas nowhere is this more evident than in the joint apprenticeship training centers that are funded and operated by joint labor management trusts between building trades unions and their signatory contractors. And whereas the safest, most highly skilled, and productive construction craft workers receive their training through privately funded local joint apprenticeship and training committees, which offer nationally recognized state-of-the-art curricula. And whereas JATC apprenticeship training combines industry-standard technical instruction with structured-on-the-job learning. And whereas the building trades and their signatory contractors invest over one billion dollars annually to apprentice and journey-level training. And whereas nearly two-thirds of all registered apprentices in the US are trained in the construction industry. Of those, seventy-four percent are trained in the unionized construction center. And whereas the building trades multi-craft core curriculum is the largest pre-apprenticeship program in the United States construction industry. Currently, there are over one hundred building trades apprenticeship readiness programs. And whereas the building trades have founded Helmets to Hard Hats, a national nonprofit program that connects National Guard Reserve, retired, and transitioning active-duty military service members with skilled training and quality career opportunities in construction. Now therefore, I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the City of Corleville, do hereby proclaim that November thirteenth through the seventeenth is National Apprenticeship Week in the City of Corleville. And I urge all businesses and community leaders to work with the building trades to support these critically important and successful training programs. Signed on this fourteenth day of November, Megan Foster, Mayor. And we have a very special guest here. Who do we have to... Oh!
Sure.
Yes.
Well, thank you.
Oh, can you step up to the mic, please?
I can.
And state your name.
So my name's John Delaney, and I'm a training coordinator for the carpenters apprenticeship for the Eastern Iowa carpenters. And I want to thank the City of Corleville. It seems like for twelve years now, I've been screaming at the top of my lungs in all the high schools, not literally, but...
[laughing]
And telling them about how we can help these young men and women fast-track into a career with good-paying benefits and good wages. And I feel like we're finally being heard. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. And we have some other folks?
Hello, guys. My name is Justin Monjalulu. I'm from Congo, DRC, Africa. And I'm a third-year apprentice. I started since two thousand and twenty-one. And I'm really grateful for being part of the trade because it has changed my life a lot. And it really humble me. And I wish all the students to be, you know, to look, you know, it's a good career to look at, actually. And thank you so much. I think that's it.
All right. Thank you. All right. Royce, do you want to say some words?
Hi, my name's Royce Peterson, Corleville resident, newly-elected city council person. I've been a carpenter since nineteen ninety-three. I started in the trades. Most of my career, I worked at the University of Iowa Hospital and Clinics. It's been a great career for me. I became an organizer for the carpenters in two thousand and eight... two thousand and thirteen, I became a business agent for carpenters local twelve-sixty out of Iowa City. And now I run Eastern Iowa for our regional council. I'm currently the chairperson for our apprenticeship board. And we have a great apprenticeship building in Cedar Rapids, right on Highway thirty and three-eighty. Right now, I think we have close to a hundred apprentices going through the program. And we have several people retiring and leaving us. So we need to bring in a whole new workforce. We have enough work right now to last us probably ten years. So... And I'm going to retire way before that. So... But yes, thank you guys so much for accepting... or reading this proclamation. We appreciate it very much on behalf of all the building trades. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for joining us this evening. Would you like to have a photo?
Yes.
Okay.
[inaudible]
Day. Whereas unintentional injuries are the leading cause of death for Iowans ages one to forty-four, and the fourth-leading cause of death for all ages. And whereas injuries and violence resulted in an annual average of two thousand two hundred deaths, fourteen thousand hospitalizations, and three hundred and eighty-seven thousand emergency department visits annually in Iowa. The number of injuries in Iowa is estimated to be higher due to the unknown number of individuals who received other medical care or no care at all. And whereas injuries can result in a high cost to Iowans, with average charges up to fifty-four thousand seven hundred dollars per hospitalization and nineteen hundred dollars per emergency department visit annually. And whereas in Iowa, the three leading causes of unintentional injury deaths in two thousand and twenty-two were falls, motor vehicle crashes, and unintentional poisoning. And whereas injuries, whether intentional or unintentional, are prevented... are preventable within the state of Iowa. University of Iowa Stead Family Hospital, University of Iowa Hospitals and Clinics, University of Iowa Injury Prevention Research Center, Iowa Department of Health and Human Services, and other partners across the state are committed to increasing public awareness and education around the prevention of injuries as we observe National Injury Prevention Day in Iowa and throughout the year. Now therefore, I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the City of Corleville, do hereby proclaim November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, to be National Injury Prevention Day. Signed on this fourteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-three, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay. And I believe we have someone here to receive this proclamation as well.
Hi, everybody. My name is Anne Saba. I am with the University of Iowa Injury Prevention Research Center. So thank you, Mayor Foster, and the whole Corleville City Council and the Corleville community for the proclamation and for helping us elevate this very important issue affecting people in our community and our state. As the proclamation stated, injuries are the leading cause of death of Iowans from ages one to forty-four. So the message of National Injury Prevention Day is that we really want to elevate is that these injuries are preventable in our state. Just a little background about the day. It was launched four years ago by injury prevention advocates around the country, and it's growing every year. And we're happy to have Corleville be a part of that. It is a day of action to raise awareness about injuries, to advocate for change, and to empower communities around this topic. It's also all about the color green, which I am wearing, which is the color often used to indicate safety. And also, on November eighteenth, landmarks across Iowa and the country and here in our community will be lighting green for National Injury Prevention Day. There'll be bridges and trauma hospitals and buildings lighting green. So there will be some in the area. So definitely keep your eye out and check out what's lighting green in our area. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Next, we have a very special presentation from our friends with the RagBri Committee. Step up to the mic.
All right. Well, my name is Josh Shamberger. I'm with the Iowa City Area Sports Commission and the CVB here in Iowa City in Corleville in North Liberty. And I'm joined here by our three members and a fourth sitting right here, Kelly, the executive committee for RagBri that took place back in July, if you remember. We had a few cyclists actually camping out in this room while the storm blew through. So we just wanted to come after paying all the bills and doing a lot of good work and wrapping RagBri up for maybe another five years before we maybe think about bringing it back to Corleville. But with a check to the City of Corleville, we decided early on that we were going to give any and all proceeds as a committee, executive committee, to two charities. The first being the Iowa City Community School District Foundation, since they have been incredible partners and really make it possible to even host RagBri. And obviously, we used the schools that night. They came in very important for emergency shelters. And then the other fifty percent of the fund, we decided as a committee that we wanted to give back to the City of Corleville Parks and Recreation Department for the incredible master plan development that's happening right here around Fifth Street into the future. So we're pleased tonight to present half of the proceeds of RagBri, even with a storm and no concert beer garden revenue. Half of the proceeds amounts to twenty-eight thousand and four hundred dollars. So a little short of fifty-seven thousand dollars that this committee worked incredibly hard on to present and give back to the community. So would like a check, Mayor?
Yes.
With our executive committee?
I've always wanted to accept a double check.
Since we paid all this money for this check.
First, yes. Just give them a round of applause. So before I accept that enormous check, I just want to say thank you to all of you. I, you know, I cannot sing your praises enough. You worked so hard, and you have worked hard every time RagBri has come to Corleville. And we so appreciate everything that you do for our community. And, you know, it's just really special that we're able to host RagBri in Corleville. And I have to say, I'm always so proud at how well we handle this large influx of people into our community. And I think the interesting year that we had with the storm and how seamlessly everything went off, there were no injuries, and, you know, losing the consort was not ideal, but the most important thing was to keep folks safe. And we did that. And I'm just really proud of everyone's involvement in RagBri. And huge thanks to you for all you do.
And if it's all right, I'd love for the rest of the committee to introduce themselves.
Yes, please.
And I saw Shane in the back. And to your point, I think Shane and emergency management and public safety deserve... was really the home run MVP of this year. You know, RagBri commented many times that, thank God, if this was going to happen, it happened in Corleville. Because not only the school district and the facilities and our plan, but the emergency management plan that was implemented within the span of ten minutes from the emergency weather forecast, folks saying, get people in shelters now, to us getting fifteen thousand-plus people in shelters. And then Shane and Ori and everybody monitoring until we said, okay, you can come out of your shelters. Shane deserves a ton of kudos on this. So would you please just let the council know who you are?
Hi, I'm Ashley Smith. I work at Think Iowa City as well as the operations manager.
I'm Kylie Stock. I also work at Think Iowa City and with the sports commission.
Hi, I'm Terry Kating. I don't work anywhere, but I am...
[laughing]
I'm retired, so... But I do want to just point out also, Josh did a great job of saying how much money we had. But at the bottom of this check, we couldn't have done that without of the support of the community, not just with helping out, but giving... writing a check to us. And they are ongoing support, most of them. But they're... most of the major donors are all listed on the bottom of this fake check. But they... we really thank them. And if you know of anyone, you come across them in the community, please continue to thank them for all they do for us.
And Terry has the real check.
Yeah.
Oh.
I've already given it to her, yeah.
And you know Sheri and Kelly, who obviously had the whole thing.
Mackenzie Graham from... she is our vice chair of the Corleville Parks Recreation Commission, come up and take a picture as well. So if Mayor and you can accept the check, Mackenzie, and we'll gather around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you too, Sheri?
Sure.
Okay, okay.
She'll be over here, too, for sure.
I don't think they take it though. No, 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 no.
Oh, I'm sorry, there.
You know what? I'm not used to these enormous checks.
Should we stand behind you and make a little bit?
You pull it.
Yeah, yeah. No, you pull it. It's going with you.
It's going to Sheri. You're good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
I think we got a better beer sale. I know. If it weren't a hundred degrees.
Might have doubled, yeah.
It was too hot to drink.
I hate it before the storm.
All right. Item number six, community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the overall comment time and the individual speaking time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So is there anyone that would like to address us this evening? Okay. Then we will move on. Item number seven. We have a public hearing for the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank construction. This project would include the improvements of reaches one and three and Becky's regions... Becky's Creek regions of Clear Creek. So I will now open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone that would like to address us? I see we have Parks and Rec Director Sheri Proud here with us. Would you like to say a few words about this?
Yes, I will just give a brief overview so everyone kind of knows where we're at and what to expect as this moves forward. This is our Clear Creek Stream Bank mitigation. We finished up our banking instrument in October and are now to the point where we're getting ready to bid this project and have it constructed. This work will take place. Reach one, up against the northeast quadrant of eighty-three, eighty interchange. Becky's Creek, which runs through just west of the Creekside Ballpark and through the Flow Trail area. And then Reach three is just south of where the new CivCo building will be here in the future as that gets constructed. Let's see. I lost my tabs to go up and down. What happened to them? Oh, here we go. A little bit closer look, you can see some of the boundaries of how this will lay out. Construction boundaries are shown here. Stream changes quite a bit, putting back that sinuosity that's been taken out over the years. There will be oxbows, there will be treatments, tow wood treatments, there will be j-hooks, and there will be stone revetment into the stream in various locations. There will be quite a bit of tree removal in this area. This will probably be the most noticeable, A, because it's very visible from eighty and three-eighty, but also it does have the most tree removal where trees have grown into the stream bank and caused problems. So what we're really doing is taking out trees, creating those riparian banks, slowing that water down, making it slow down and reach the creek a lot slower, and then moving that with a lot more sinuosity. We'll plant back trees where we want them and maintain them where we want them. In Becky's Creek, this will be just a lot of channelized work. It will not affect the flow trails that go through here. But again, treatments that will slow water down and really make sure that it infiltrates and reaches our creek system at a lot slower pace. And then we also, at Reach three, are making a big change from where the stream is now to add back sinuosity along here. You'll see some different soil lifts and treatments along this way, as well as those armored banks, so we can get water to flow where we'd like it to flow at. I'm just gonna just...
Do you remember where the existing trail is?
This right here is the Clear Creek Trail. This line, the white line, that right above.
I'm sorry, the existing creek.
Oh, the existing creek. Comes here and stays here and comes here and then kind of follows. This is a big change for Reach three. Yes.
I've been on that trail. You can't see the creek currently, I don't think.
Not at this location, and then you... and then it comes closer to the trail.
Right.
Here. Yes. Yeah. Just a few of the construction documents. We're changing. As you can see, I've talked a lot about how the creek banks now are very steep. You come to the top and you basically fall a ten, twelve, fourteen-foot drop-off into Clear Creek. This pulls the banks back into a three-to-one slope, allows us to really have lots of room for flood potential there, lots of room for water to flow through, as well as being able to plant grasses that will be thirsty, as well as hold those banks in place as we come through. These are some of the other treatments you'll see. Soil lifts, they'll go and actually wrap these in fabric and have soil lifts where our slopes are two-to-one, and we can't change them from a two-to-one. This is live staking as they have the banks... as they get the banks done, especially this is again kind of on a two-to-one slope more than anything else. Trees are actually staked into the bank, or tree spikes are staked into the bank there. And then this is a treatment of the rock pools that you'll see in step pool structures. I've talked also about, I want to show the tow wood treatments, because these are again just rock formations that you'll see just barely under the water on a normal pool. We don't want to see too much of this rock above pool. This year, we would have probably seen a lot of rock with as little water as there was, but we just want to get that right at normal pool level. And this is what I keep talking about with the tow wood, and they take... they'll take those trees out of the Reach one, and the ones that are appropriate, cut the tops off, leave the root ball in... structure in place, and actually will be pounded into the banks to stabilize those banks. And then dirt comes up over the top of them. So... and then those seedings are placed in. And you can see down here where they've crisscrossed those tow... put those tow wood into the... into the banks. So some really fabulous treatments. This is going to be something that we'll be able to show many, many communities. They'll come and visit. We have a twenty-four-hour cam that will... construction cam that will go up on this, as well as drone footage and video that we can share with the community in the future. So this bid estimate... oh, I want to show one more. This is... these are examples of what these will look like when done. So you can see an example of the riparian banks being pulled back and grasped in. Some of the rock treatment here. You can see how the water flows, rocks in, but then flows over at a normal pool. Some of those treatments with the tow wood being pounded into the banks. And this is the B branch in Dubuque where they've used several of those treatments, and then also have a trail along the side like ours will have... ours already has. So just kind of to show you what this will all look like. The estimate right now is at four point seven million, but this includes our construction administration fees and contingency, and also includes a really big bid item for the contractor to take away all of the dirt, which is approximately two hundred and ten thousand cubic yards of dirt. The staff are working hard to find an alternate plan. We would prefer that that earth stays someplace very close, and we get that number greatly shrunk. So we're working hard on that to keep it near Reach three, whether it's in storage or being able to be a part of some fill there. It's going to be a lot of good topsoil when it comes out. So we also have that opportunity to share with the community or do something with that. Bid documents will be available by November twenty-seventh on bid serve site called Quest CDN. And Bolton and Mink is the firm that we've been working with, and they'll help us to get those loaded, as well as we'll put something out on bid opportunities so people can see where they can get those plans at. And then we are going to slide this bid opening to January third with that bid report and recommendation to the January ninth council meeting. We talked a lot today about this, and we feel we've got some good advice, some from some consultants that say we really need to extend this bid period from when the documents are out to the day we take bids. We were planning on about a two-and-a-half to three-week timeframe, and they would like to see us have that more like four-to-five week timeframe. So we'll be sliding that bid opportunity as well. You will also hear maybe an abbreviated version of this on November twenty-eighth. It's been a while since I've done a construction project this large that takes a public hearing and forgot to do the public hearing notice in the paper. So I take ownership of that. So sorry, you're going to have to hear this one more time.
All right. Thank you so much for that overview. Do we have any written comments before I close the public hearing?
No written.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Since we have the public hearing has to get published, we're going to slide item B to the next meeting.
I... good to know. Okay.
So we'll just go ahead and move on to item eight, Madam Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Okay. Item number eight. We have another public hearing for Fifth Street improvements from Twelfth Avenue to Twentieth Avenue. This project will improve Fifth Street between Twelfth and Twentieth Avenue, and this will no longer include water main improvements, which were bid out as a separate project in hopes of getting another bid. Acceptance of bids, contract, and bond documents are submitted to the Iowa Department of Transportation for concurrence. Could I have the bid report, please? We have our city engineer, Scott Larson, to give us an overview.
Thank you. On October seventeenth, the Iowa DOT received eight bids for our Fifth Street project. And those bids ranged from a low of five million four hundred sixty-four thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars and five cents to a high of eight million two hundred forty-four thousand three hundred and six dollars and five cents. And the engineer's estimate on this rebid was six million two hundred seventy... two thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. The low bid was from Dave Schmidt Construction Company Incorporated from Cedar Rapids. And we have a history of working with Dave Schmidt, some as a pri- Some as a prime contractor, they've done several projects as a subcontractor, and based on that working relationship, we do recommend awarding the contract to Dave Schmidt Construction.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Okay. So I'm looking at the agenda. Do we have a public hearing?
No.
Okay, we don't. But it says public hearing on the agenda. Okay. That's okay, no problem, no problem. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something. Okay. So, since we do not have a public hearing, we will consider the first resolution.
Resolution accepting bids and awarding the construction contract for the Fifth Street improvements, 12th Avenue to 20th Avenue. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by-
Second.
Seconded by when? Any questions or discussion on this?
I guess I, I'm curious, Scott. We had bids that far exceeded the engineer's estimate that we declined. It sounds like we saved a lot of money. I'm wondering how much, if we had accepted the lowest bid at that time compared to the way we did it, what was the difference in-
Right around a million.
Million, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Could I have the roll call, please?
Goodrich.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Gwen.
Hi.
Gross.
Hi.
Knutson.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Hi.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item C, could I have that resolution, please?
Resolution approving the contract and bond documents for the Fifth Street improvements, 12th Avenue to 20th Avenue. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by-
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Gwen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number nine, Morrison Creek Drainage Way Project. This project will build a trail, or built a trail crossing at the Morrison Creek Drainage Way north of Eighth Street and connected the trails on both sides of the drainage way. So I would entertain a motion to approve pay application three from J Harding Inc. for the Morrison Creek Drainage Way Project.
So moved.
Moved by when? Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
This is a great improvement, by the way. It's really nice to have that connection now.
Yes, it is. Awesome. Okay. Item B, could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution accepting the Morrison Creek Drainage Way Project as completed. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Wen, seconded by-
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments? All right. Roll call, please.
Gwen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Gwen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Gwen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Gwen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Gwen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Gwen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 10, Urban Renewal Areas. This ordinance sets the base value of Lot 7 Coral Ridge Commerce Park Phase 7 in the Oakdale Urban Renewal Area on Cross Park Road, and this would be the lot with Barrettts on it. This is the second consideration of this ordinance. Could I have the ordinance read, please?
Ordinance number 2023-1014 and ordinance amending ordinance number 608-707-2001-942, 2006-1052, 2013-1009, 2014-1007, 2017-1017, 2020-1014, and 2022-1014, providing that all property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the Correville Urban Renewal Project area in the City of Correville, County of Johnson, State of Iowa, buying for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Correville, County of Johnson, Iowa City, and Clear Creek Gomana School Districts and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to, and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by said city in connection with said urban renewal redevelopment projects. This ordinance introduced for adoption, second consideration by Councilmember Jones, seconded by-
Second.
Seconded by Wen. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Gross.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Gwen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its second consideration, all ayes. Number 12, Street Finance Report. This report will itemize the allocation of funds used to construct, repair, and maintain city streets. And it appears that we have our finance director, Melissa Christiansen, here to give us an overview about this.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, Councilwoman. So this is the FY23 Annual Street Financial Report. It's required by state law to be filed with the DOT by December 1st, and this ensures that we'll be able to collect those RUT funds, or road use tax funds, every year. So the report was in your packet. There wasn't, it was pretty similar to last year. I was just going to point out a couple of things. One of them was the right-of-way and then the street, the new roadway. Those special revenues increased from the prior year, and basically it was due to the Fifth Street improvements, and then also the John Doe easement made up the difference of those two. Revenues were down a little bit in the debt service because we didn't issue any debt to finance street projects, and there were no proceeds from debt. And then the final piece is the new equipment purchased, and there were three pieces of new equipment, a dump box, skid loader, and then a Ford truck.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Could I have the ordinance read, please? The resolution read, please?
Resolution approving the fiscal year 2023 Annual Street Finance Report. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by-
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions, comments, or discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Gwen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 13, Annual Urban Renewal Report. The city council is required by law to formally approve by motion the filing of an annual urban renewal report with the Iowa Department of Management. And we have Melissa Christiansen back with us to talk a little bit about this.
Again, this is a report that's required to be filed by December 1st. It's going to detail all three of our TIF areas. It's going to itemize all projects in those TIF areas, the debt taken on for completing those projects, as well as any rebates.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Could I, I would entertain a motion approving and accepting the annual urban renewal report for fiscal year 2023.
So moved.
Moved by Gross.
Second.
Seconded by Jones. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved unanimously. Okay. Number 14, Financing. The city council is required to determine whether it will appropriate funds for bond payment by December 1st of each year. Melissa.
Another December 1st report. So this was Exhibit A, the annual appropriation of debt services in your packet. So every bond issued there, we will have to annually appropriate the payment for both interest and principal, and you can, as well as any rebates. So this also certifies any of those bonds that contain our principal and interest in our TIF areas. Total is going to be the $60,015,466 for annual appropriation. It will be in the FY25 budget.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution appropriating payment of certain annual appropriation debt service instruments and directing the finance officer to certify tax increment financing debt to the Johnson County Auditor. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by-
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Jones.
Aye.
Gwen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 15, Interfund TIF Loans. We have two parts to this agenda item. The first is a resolution that would authorize an internal advance payable from the TIF Fund to, for urban renewal projects. And this is a $75,000 advance for financing projects from the Oakdale Urban Renewal TIF Revenue Fund.
Yes.
Melissa.
That's correct. So this would also be Exhibit A, the TIF expenditures, internal loans, and the first column would be for the Oakdale, a $75,000 loan.
Great. Thank you. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution authorizing internal advance payable from tax increment revenue fund for urban renewal project costs. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Wen, seconded by-
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Questions? Discussion? Roll call.
Gwen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Gwen.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item B, this is another resolution that would be a $150,000 advance for financing projects from the 12th Avenue Urban Renewal Area Tax Increment Revenue Fund.
Yeah. So similar to the Oakdale one, the 12th Avenue would pay for the itemized expenditures found on Exhibit A.
Great. Thanks. Okay. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution authorizing internal advance payable from tax increment revenue fund for urban renewal project costs. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by-
Second.
Seconded by Wen. Questions or comments? All right. Roll call, please.
Gross.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Gwen.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 16, Iowa River Landing Lease Amendment. This amendment will extend the current lease term from December 31st, 2023, to June 30th, 2024. This would reduce the square footage by 730 square feet, and this was the sleep store in the Iowa River Landing. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving Third Amendment to that certain lease agreement between the City of Correville and the University of Iowa Community Medical Services LLC for 920 East Second Avenue Suite 120. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by-
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions or discussion? I suppose it would be relevant to add that the reduction is because of the new store going in, correct?
Yeah. The adjacent store, All Spice, that'll be opening in the next week, will be taking the 730 square feet and adding it to their current space that they're building out and add more products to their store, so. And the sleep store is waiting to, they're waiting to determination of which Mercy space that they've acquired they're going to go into, so that's, will allow them that time to figure that out as well.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this?
You say this week it's opening?
Yes.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Great. All right. Could I have the roll call, please?
Knutson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Gwen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 17, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Madam Mayor, I would like to ask Council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, A to double E.
Moved by Wen. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Could I have the roll call, please?
Goodrich.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Gwen.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Number, number 18, City Administrators' Report.
Where'd Scott go? He was supposed to. I'll grab him real quick, because we did, yeah, if you just- Today, we were able, excuse me, last Friday, the pedestrian portion of the First Avenue I-80 project was open. It's beautiful. You, this is two-thirds of the pedestrian, the long tunnel that goes completely diagonally across to the hotel. That's, will be finished with the next phase of the project, but you can cross the off-ramps. They have lights there for pedestrian crossing, and you can get down safely. And you do use the new bridge, pedestrian bridge, and then you use the trail underneath the tunnel. So that's working. We've seen lots of people using it already, and then within the next three weeks, they will be doing a new sidewalk connection into the Iowa River Landing, and that will enable you to actually go into the Iowa River Landing, and you could make your way down to the Iowa River Trail if that's your destination. So then we also, today, the transfer of vehicles was made, and I just wanted Scott to share a little bit about, because there's a lot of different phases coming up, and traffic will be, some things will be able to do and some you won't, and I just thought it would be good if Scott could share with the public what to expect. And that transfer went really well, except I came along at the wrong time and ended up on Interstate 80 instead of on First Avenue, but that was okay.
Yeah. While I'm, excuse me, while I'm logging in here, I'll just kind of explain a little bit. Today, there was, I don't know if any of you made it out there, but we had a lot of tanker truck traffic related to the Magellan Terminal today, and that was due to some terminals being offline in the Iowa region, and so there were additional tankers that were sent[1630.52] and that was due to some terminals being offline in the Iowa region, and so there were additional tankers that were sent to the Corleville Terminal, so. Not great timing, but we, we made it through. Just give me a moment here, please. Okay, so what I want to start with is, is what was implemented today, and this is really just a terrible drawing to try and show in a meeting, but I'll try and kind of point out the key points. So, what we're looking at is the southerly part of the interchange. So you can see East Ninth Street, Iowa River Landing Place, Pon City Way, so Trader Joe's is right in here. And so the big change that happened today is that if you are a driver on eastbound eighty exiting at First Avenue in Corleville, you will no longer, or can no longer, come down to First Avenue and take a left to head north. And as mentioned before, that is simply because we have about six to seven feet of vertical change in, between old and new First Avenue. So all that eastbound off-ramp traffic has to turn right to head south on First Avenue. If you're coming from the north side of the inner, interchange, coming past the cemetery and the Hampton Inn area, you now have a decision to make right, right as soon as you pass the hotel driveway. If you want to go west on eighty, you stay in the far right lane. If you want to go south on First Avenue or east on eighty, you merge to the left. And if you merge left, you continue south onto new pavement, and then you cross onto the new vehicular bridge that's been under construction since spring. You cross over eighty, and then, as you pass over eighty, there is a new southbound left turn lane that you can take to head east on eighty, or you can continue south, and so this is where it gets a little interesting. So, as you continue south, you're in this blue lane, the traffic coming off the eastbound eighty off-ramp is the red lane, and so there's a fairly short distance where the two lanes start running side by side. And it's not that big of an issue if there's no traffic in the other lane, but as we watch today, you know, when there is traffic, a lot of folks in the red, they want to get into the Iowa River Landing, and so there's a lot of weaving. Right, and they may not know that exists, you know, especially if they're out of town and they're just relying on GPS navigation or instructions, and so there is quite a bit of weaving that happens there. And ultimately, some of those folks in the red lane are trying to get to the southbound left, which is this magenta line, to go down into the Iowa River Landing like they always do. We've made an effort to reach out to the employers and the residents that, in the Iowa River Landing, that if, if this is kind of one of their regular drives, that they can help everybody out if they do stay in the lane and just go one block further south to East Seventh Street, and, and come in and out that way, so. But, one of the, the benefits of this new change that happened today is, as you're heading northbound on First Avenue, and you go over Interstate eighty, we now have reintroduced the northbound left turn, so there is a dedicated northbound left to head west on eighty, and that's a very heavy traffic movement for us, and so there is a separate through lane to continue north, and that seemed to work, worked very well today. And then, of course, the, the really big change happened on Friday when we opened up the new bike pedestrian route, which shifts everybody from the west side of First Avenue to the east side. I'll just step through it real quick. As you're down on East Ninth Street, you're now sent to the east side of First Avenue, and you pass up, you go up along the west side of the Trader Joe's parking lot, past Trader Joe's, and then you go through a, the first tunnel, which is actually, you're crossing underneath Iowa River Landing Place, that will ultimately connect directly into the Iowa River Landing, it doesn't yet. You pass through that tunnel, and then you reach a second tunnel, and that is passing under the future eastbound eighty on-ramp. That's the first tunnel, if you remember la, late last winter or early this year, that was the first structure we saw out there in the middle of nowhere. Pass through that tunnel, you make your way up, climb up and, and reach the new pedestrian bridge that crosses over eighty, and that is when you switch to a temporary trail that takes you across the westbound eighty off-ramp, right here, and that's at a pedestrian push-button signal. And you stay along the east side of First Avenue on that temporary sidewalk, up to the River Products Hotel intersection, and then you cross here using a temporary pedestrian signal. So that's where we're at right now, and this will stay in place for, till roughly mid-December. And I can tell you that there are a whole lot of people watching this all day long, and even tonight, there's a lot of communication between the city, the DOT, the consultants, the contractors. Lots of people are out there driving, looking for things, and there's already a long list of adjustments that, that we will see implemented probably first thing tomorrow morning before the next morning rush hour, so. So the, the awkward movement that I highlighted earlier, where the red and the, the blue merged, that's what we have to kind of work with for the next three, four weeks. But then we move on to the next stage, and I'll just touch on that quickly.
Scott, before you-
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I just have a real quick question. So the folks that are coming off the, they're coming west off of, they're from, coming from the west on eighty, and they want to turn left to go north, but they can't now. They go south. So if they want to go north, where does that detour take them? Because they would have to go south, and then how do they get going back north?
So the signage actually tries to catch them on Interstate eighty before they exit. That is the official advertised route, is that if you want to go north on First Avenue, you need to pass by First Avenue, continue east to the Dubuque Street Interchange, exit there, come back, and then you can head north once you make it back to the First Avenue Interchange. The folks that, that do come south, we can tell when, when people maybe are a little bit lost. A lot of them, I think, just simply go into one of the adjacent corner businesses, like come and go and turn around and use the signal, so. Some U-turns out there, too. We see those occasionally, so. Yeah. Okay?
Okay, yeah, thank you.
So, again, the next stage that we are going to be moving into in December will eliminate the existing eastbound eighty off-ramp. And we will start using the new eastbound eighty off-ramp. So down here is the existing off-ramp, the new off-ramp is up here. And so, as soon as that new off-ramp is used, you will be able to go either north on First Avenue or south on First Avenue at this new intersection here. So we only have to go a few weeks. Well, they actually have most of the ramp itself, the, the length of the ramp is almost entirely paved, and I can tell you, as soon as they move traffic over, they are, we're out there with hydro hammers, excavators, breaking up the concrete. And so, and they, yeah, they already sawed the, the pavement of the old pedestrian trail bridge in half. So, so they were, they were really, really after it, and so the red, well, just, I'll just stick to the traffic control, but with the, the next phase, you will be able to come off of eastbound eighty and turn left to go north or turn right to go south. And this will essentially put First Avenue southbound into a single lane, so instead of that merging movement, there will only be one lane coming southbound. And then, as you get down closer to East Ninth Street, will widen back out to three lanes. So again, three, three and a half weeks of this awkward merge situation, and then we'll be back into a, a simpler lane configuration. Other than that, you know, there, we'll see them, like I said, they're already demolishing pavement on the west side of First Avenue, they've already saw, saw cut the pedestrian trail bridge, the old bridge. We'll be seeing them doing their overnight bridge demo, demolition, the road bridge, where they close eighty overnight and detour traffic using Correg Ave, Highway Six and First Avenue. So, yeah, they're very busy out there.
Questions, Scott? Kelly, have you ridden, I saw a picture, all the way north across the exit ramp? Is that, so there's a signalized light there to get across?
Yeah, you have to do two signals, one across the ramp, excuse me, across the first ramp, and then you have to do another signal across at the driveway to the hotel.
Okay.
And it really, you don't sit there very long, because the, the traffic movement is so quick through there. And people, to their credit, were really paying attention, and so they would not-
That's my question, were people paying attention?
They wouldn't cross the, the crosswalk there, 'cause there's a crosswalk marked on the pavement, and people were doing really good at watching for people coming across there, so I was very pleased, and that was the very first day when people weren't used to it yet, so.
And I'll mention, too, that we do have some temporary lighting near the two new pedestrian tunnels. Not, there, there's not, there's no permanent electrical power there yet, so the, the contractor set up two towers that will provide some illumination. There is no lighting yet along the trail bridge, but it will have lighting ultimately, and all along the trail connection will have lighting through the interchange.
Great, is that?
I think, yeah.
Is that twelve-foot sidewalk?
Ten.
It seems so wide.
It's ten.
Ten?
Yeah.
And it does narrow down the temporary sidewalk.
Temporary narrow.
But that, yeah, that is all temporary, so it will go out to the full width.
Yes, but it is, people do need to use caution as they come down from the north, 'cause it is pretty narrow.
Just, just-
For the temporary.
On the, the temporary part, yeah, it's, it's five feet wide, so.
But the rest of the trail is just beautiful.
Yeah, and the, the pedestrian tunnels are also taller than our other tunnels, if you're familiar with any of those, so they don't feel the same as some of the other pedestrian trail tunnels that we have.
Awesome. Any other questions? Thank you.
The only other comment I'd make about this project is that I did get a comment from another community that's working on a bridge, and they wanted to use similar aesthetic improvements, and the DOT's comment was about, well, Corleville got twenty million dollars of federal funds to put into this. I thought it was very good that at least the DOT acknowledged that, you know, we did help in the project, and so that's one of the things that they're doing to make payment back, I guess, and that's all I've got at this point, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much.
Oh, I did want to just, I had, thank, and thinking of City Attorney Don Deal, he's got some health problems for, and the last couple of weeks, and he's on recovery, but just thinking of Don tonight.
Great, thanks so much. Okay, Mayor's Report, I just have one very important thing this evening. First, I want to, I want to start by congratulating everyone that ran and, in, in last week's city and school elections, and want to say congratulations to all of the winners, especially our two new council members that will be joining us very soon, actually. Councilmember-elect Royce Peterson will be joining us at the next meeting. But before Royce can join us, we have to do the bittersweet thing of acknowledging the service of Councilmember Keith Jones, and this is Keith's last meeting with us, and I just, I want to say that, you know, I've worked with Keith in, in many different capacities, and it's, I've always enjoyed working with Keith, I've, I've learned a lot from working with Keith, and I have to say, I've been inspired by Keith many, many, many times, by his love of community, by his calm and steady leadership, and just, you know, the, he's, he's a fixture, he's a fixture in the city of Corleville, and it has been an absolute honor to serve with you, Keith.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Yes, and I have a special plaque, little gift for you to commemorate your service. Yes, you're welcome, yes, yes, and I, I just, I, you know, thank you for your service on the city council, but you have a long history of service to this community that predates everything that, that you've done over the last eighteen months. So, you know, Corleville is a better community because of you, and, and it's been an honor serving with you.
Well, I don't want to jump precedent here, but I do have a few comments I'd like to make.
Of course.
Can I make them now?
Yes, yes.
I was gonna wait, but I'll-
No, go for it, go for it.
I just want to thank you, Mayor, and the council for the confidence you put in me to, to appoint me to this position. As I've told many of you before, it's been an extremely rewarding and pleasurable experience, more so than I ever anticipated. Something I wanted to do for a long time, and I really appreciate having the opportunity to do it. I, I, the, the thing I think that I have, I've learned a lot, and have so much more to learn, but I think the thing that has struck home to me, I knew it going into it, but it's, I've had the opportunity to meet so many city staff, and to get to know city staff so much better. And I've always said that the reason Corleville is what Corleville is, is because of the staff we have here in the city of Corleville, and that has been hit home to me more so, having the opportunity to work with these people directly for the last seventeen months. So, it's been a real honor, and it is bittersweet to me, walking in here tonight, I think this is the last time I'm gonna get to sit in this chair, so. It is, it is sad, but I know we've got two great council people that were elected, and by the way, congratulations on your reelection. But we have two great people coming on, and Royce will be here in a couple of weeks, and, and I know the city will be in great shape. So, thank you all for the opportunity that I've had here this last seventeen months, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody, anybody else want to jump in?
I had a couple things.
Go for it.
Well, I, I really have appreciated you, Keith, and that your contributions have stretched beyond the council chambers here. And with the Parks and Recreation Board, I just heard Sherri talking with you today, maybe continuing on on maybe the West Land Use Park, and you helped with the Dovetail Neighbors. Thank you so much for being involved with that, the Dovetail Pond, and began with the Northridge Park Playground renovation also, and then you were the education chair for the Corvo One Fifty. And this year, as we celebrated a hundred and fifty years, and you did a fabulous job as a historian at the library and at cemetery walks and the year-end celebration. So all throughout the year, there, and also there are many other things that you participated in, I think about the I three eighty and nine sixty-five highway grand opening, and the hike that we did up the Disc Golf Hill at a recent luncheon learn, and you were just very involved, and you used your knowledge and experience for the good of Corleville. We appreciate it.
Yes, indeed. Anyone else?
I just want to add one thing I forgot to say. It was a real pleasure and honor to be able to serve during Corleville's one-fiftieth year. I mean, that obviously wasn't planned, but to be able to, to serve in this position during that hundred and fifty year celebration was pretty darn cool.
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, I've known Keith for twenty-two years, and the first time I met Keith was not even in a, well, it was before I was even in the city council, but on the first day of school every year, Hills Bank does a breakfast for the teachers, and I remember meeting Keith my first year as a teacher, and just the excitement that he had for the upcoming school year was just infectious. But not only that, just his dedication and commitment. His kids had long graduated, and Keith remained a really steadfast volunteer, whether it was bringing teachers breakfast or working the chain gang for the football team, which I think you're still doing.
No.
No, you, you find-
I had retired.
All right, it's about time, Keith, yeah.
For thirty years, I, I figured that was enough.
But just, you know, and Liberty High School won't love this, but, you know, West Side's been Corleville's school, and you've always been super dedicated to Corleville's school. And then I had the opportunity to work with you firsthand when I was the, for eight years on the library board, and watching you do that was just absolutely amazing, and you know, people might think, I mean, right now the library board has got to be crazy with some of the baloney that's going on, but what, one of the things I really admired about you, Keith, was during COVID, that you took our staff and their concerns first and foremost to heart, and, and even when there was some pressure to relinqu, be relentless in some of that, you didn't do that. You, you had your thoughts and your convictions, and you held to them, and as Megan said, too, just the way that you're steady when you, when you lead, it's really, really assuring. And then, it's just been a true honor to be a colleague on council. You've just been an exemplary member, and I, I, I wish I could have had many, many more years of service with you. But probably the thing that I'll remember the most about you, and I think the greatest contribution, contribution you've made to the city was your Richard Simmons outfit. Because the, the way those legs were displayed, I mean, at some point, those should be in a museum. I guarantee a hundred and fifty years later, when we're celebrating three hundred years, people will be talking about Keith Jones's legs in that parade.
Sure glad you brought that up.
Thank you, well, absolutely, but congratulations, Keith, and it's been a real honor.
Thank you very much, thank you.
I don't know, I think the Cousin Eddie costume was pretty, pretty great also.
We've had some good ones, that's for sure.
That, that, that one might be my favorite one, and also Doc Brown.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't know, it's, it's hard. Richard Simmons, though.
I don't think he's even a competitor.
Well, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, thank you, okay, all right.
Mayor, may I?
Yeah, absolutely.
I just wanted to say that it's been an honor to serve with you. I haven't known you that long, but, you know, we have had, well, I have had the pleasure of working with you on various different occasions, and just like all the statements that I've made before, your leadership and your, you know, steadiness when you lead, really calm, you know, have a calm presence on everyone, and, and knowing that this is your last council meeting, serving as a counselor, but that doesn't mean that you are going to stop working to better our community, to make Corleville a safe and welcoming place. um, to make Corleville a safe and welcoming place for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? You, Mike?
I was gonna wait my turn.
Okay, no, we're, we're breaking all the rules tonight. That's okay. Go, go for it.
Yeah, I just echo everything that's been said. I haven't known you as long as some folks here, but it's been great working with you, and so glad you applied, and so glad we picked you. Thanks so much.
Great. All right. That is all I have. City Attorney's Report?
As Kelly said, Don is hopefully on the mend here. He did send his regrets that he wouldn't make it tonight. Knowing him, he's probably watching on TV from his, from his trusty couch there, so say hi to Don. I also would like to thank Keith for, I've known Keith for a long time, going back to the chain gang before I started officiating football on Friday nights. I was a sub on his chain gang crew a couple of times, including one time I fell in the mud during running down the field. But also, I, I, I have known Keith pretty much the whole time I've been here. He's, he was my community banker. He helped me buy my first two, or assisted me with getting loans for our houses that we've purchased over the years. And, and I know Rex is always the official Mr. Corleville, but Keith is pretty close to Mr. Corleville himself, I would say.
Thank you. Okay, Committee and Council Members Report. We'll start down at this end with Mike.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I want to congratulate you and, and Rich and Royce as well. Look forward to working with you all next term or earlier, I guess. I want to kind of continue some thoughts on the trails that we just heard a little bit about. I did get the opportunity, I came back from Arizona, so I've been out a little bit. I got the opportunity to go for a nice bike ride this morning and went over on the trail and concur one hundred percent. It's beautiful, great improvement over the other side across, you know, First Avenue Trail. I would, you know, echo a small bit of caution for people who are crossing that I eighty eastbound off-ramp. Anytime you have people turning right, you gotta assume they don't see you, even if you have the right of way. So Kelly said, that's good to hear. And that was my experience today, that they stopped and were good, but it only takes one driver to, to be looking left and, and not seeing the pedestrian on the right when they're not looking to do some serious damage. So continue to be cautious for one more year, and then we won't have to worry about any of that. My other comments, I know we've had some emails and comments about some of the trail crossings, including Fifth Avenue, Biscuit Creek, and Oakdale at Poplar and Timber, I think, as, as it goes down to the schools. And I think Scott maybe was going to do some research on options for that, and I don't, if we've heard anything, but I just do want to consider doing something about both those inner, or crosswalks, I guess, as we approach next year's budget. It would, I think, be something that I would prioritize. And finally, the last little bit of trails, I, I did also bike on the North Liberty Trail behind Ivy, which is about a quarter mile of that is unfinished and probably the worst bit of trail we have. So I see Sherri's here, and, and at some point would like to see that. You know, just, it's just an old blacktop with a lot of bumps, and, and I can imagine somebody riding fast on that and not realizing how bad it is and getting injured. So it also, and also happened to be part of our Oakdale TIF, which I believe we could, we could tap into as resources for that. So that would be my last priority for the trails as we look at next year's budget. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Awesome. Thank you. Councilmember Gross?
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, congratulations to you and, and everybody on the hard-fought, tough reelections there, reelections. But yeah, welcome to everybody. I'm gonna start with a silly question. Someone asked me if the new hospital for the university was in Corleville. I said, no, it's North Liberty. But they said, no, there's a Corleville sign, like right in front of the, like there's bricks.
Yeah, we just agreed with North Liberty that we would do the south two sides of the intersection as coming into Corleville, and they designed the north two. So, but you're right, the hospital is officially in, their south boundary would be Corleville's north boundary on that side of the street. On the other side of the street, it goes all the way up to Forever Green Road, so, yeah.
That's what I thought. I just want to make sure, but then I did drive over, there are, there are these two posts right in kind of in front of the hospital, so.
It was just because that was a convenient space, place. Both cities agreed to make that transition.
Makes sense. And then second, I'll give a Convention Business Bureau report. October is one of the busiest months, as you can imagine. Over thirty thousand people were in Corleville as a result of the programming that the C V B does. And while that's important, I think what's most important is, is the three point three million dollars in revenue to our local community and our local businesses. So since Josh is here, thank you to the great work that your team does that's constantly fostering this, this, this hub of, of entertainment that we've been working on. And I don't think we could do without that. Obviously, the state volleyball tournament was a big conduit in that, but there's other big events, the Donnybrook and some of, not, Donny, yeah, Donnybrook's coming up, right? Yeah, coming up here too. So a lot of other big events coming on as well. And I believe that is all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okey-dokey. Thank you. Councilmember Nguyen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of things tonight. I know that the rec center has been offering a free level-one swim classes to kids in the community. The next round of those classes open on December ninth. I think Sherri's here, so I just want to make sure that I have the date correct. And those fill up really quickly, but swimming is one of the skill that can save lives. And oftentimes, those skill don't get, you know, developed because there is a lack of free public swimming pool. And so I would encourage residents to take advantage of that free level-one class. You can register online or call the rec center on December ninth as soon as they open and, and get those going. And then the CCPA is having a play, Mary Poppins, on the eighth to the ten and the fifteen to the seventeen. And I have heard that it is going to be sold out. So if you want to check out Mary Poppins, get your tickets now. And then the, the Corleville Community Food Pantry will partner with the rec center to host a community meal on December eighth. And at that meal, we are going to have Snowman for photo ops. And then we are also going to have, to offer free vaccine, is flu and COVID nineteen booster vaccine. It's open to everyone, so we, we invite you all to come eat with us. The teen advisory from the library will be giving out books for anyone that come participate. And we are working on a menu right now, so we can't share anything yet. United Way is partnering with a lot of local agency to connect family to donor who will, you know, grant them their wishes for gifts. And so if you have the needs for holiday gift for your family, do come to the pantry and we'll be able to register your family and connect you with a, a donor to get your family gifts. Toy for Todd also do the same thing. They just register some family tonight, and then they are coming back to the pantry on the eighteen. So please come by. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. And I just will put in a plug for the vaccines. At the community meal, I, I got both of mine at the last community meal, and my husband did too. And it's super convenient.
Yes.
You come in, you, you can get your food and then get vaccinated, and, and I'm so glad that I did. I'm so glad that I did it when I, when, at the last meal, so.
The wait is not long, so.
It's not. Yeah, it's a lot quicker and easier than going to pharmacy or your doctor, so. Thank you for that. All right, Councilmember Jones?
I just have one little story to tell, and I shared this with Josh last week. At the Iowa Women's Basketball Game a week ago, I sat in front of a group of ladies, and after a while, figured out they were the coaching staff from Trinity Catholic Church, or Trinity Catholic School in Fort Madison, who made the finals of the state volleyball tournament. So at one point, I turned around and asked their head coach what, what her thoughts were of being in Corleville for the volleyball tournament. And, and she was very, very complimentary. She was extremely complimentary of the change that was made yesterday, of this year, of the staggering times, how well that worked, and how, how great the venue is here compared to what Cedar Rapids have in terms of warm-up space and, and all of that. And so I just, I, I just really appreciated her comments, and I thought those are very, very good comments from a, you know, an unbiased person about how they like coming to Corleville. So just a thanks to Think Iowa City and all the work they do for all the programming they bring. But I had the opportunity to be at two sessions of the volleyball, and it's a pretty exciting thing. It just, it, it just, you just leave with an extremely good feeling about Corleville and about how good a time the people that attend that have. So thanks for all you do, Josh. And then, again, I just want to thank everyone for the great comments and for this wonderful award. It's been my pleasure to serve, and I just appreciate all the comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Councilmember Goodrich?
I mentioned that the Friends of the Library had their book sale, and they raised almost six thousand dollars. Thank you to the volunteers that are involved with that. And again, congratulations, Megan and Rich and Royce. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Nguyen, seconded by Knutson. All in favor, please say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.